I order the regular meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council for May 24th, 2022. This regular meeting will be followed by a work session tonight. The agendas are available at the rear of the room. If you have comments that you would like to make at the end of the regular meeting under public comments tonight, please sign the form at the back of the room. The clerk will collect that momentarily. There's other paperwork back there for you as well. Those of you who may be listening on the live stream, if you have comments you want to make to the village council tonight, you may do so by sending an email to publiccomments@vopnc.org. Those comments will be received by the village clerk and they will be distributed to the council and appropriate staff in due course, but they will not be read tonight. And just a reminder about signing the list. Okay. We'll move on into item number two on the agenda, which is invocation by Reverend Tudor Foley and acknowledged by the Pledge of Allegiance. We all rise, please.
The Lord be with you. Almighty God, we ask that you bless our mayor and this council as they represent the people and community of Pinehurst. Grant that they may have a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, so that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices as they consider the needs and concerns of our village. We thank you for their service and the time they give for our community. And we ask that you bless each member of this council and their families. In your holy name, amen. Allegiance, the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and one.
Thank you, Reverend Tudor Foley. Good to see you again. Appreciate you being part of the team here at our meetings. We'll move on to agenda item number three, which will be reports from the village manager and members of the village council. I'll call on our village manager, Jeff Sanborn.
Thank you, John. I have nothing to report today.
All right. From my point of view, a few comments and reports. As mayor, I had a few interesting meetings and opportunities over the last two weeks, and I'll just mention them here to show you the sort of interest there is in Pinehurst and things that go on we don't really think about every day. I had a call from the mayor of Cramertown, North Carolina, over by Charlotte. He was in town with his son playing in one of the high school golf tournaments, and we had quite a nice visit. He's been a mayor and a citizen of Cramertown for some time who visits Pinehurst and has been very interested in what we do here and how we do things because he realizes the special nature and the history that we have. So we shared some thoughts about that. His town is a bit of a historic place, too, although in a different way from Pinehurst. So that was quite interesting. I then spoke last week to one of the first grade classes at Pinehurst Elementary School. You will never see a better organized class of young folks. Questions written out, hands go up, hands go down. They don't say a word until they're called upon. We have a great teaching facility there, and obviously the first graders are benefiting from that. I attended the dinner honoring the 100th anniversary of the Sandhills Women's Exchange. As many of you know, they are celebrating their 100th anniversary this year, along with our other centenarians and folks in places with long-term connections here, Mr. Olmstead in his 200th year, and Mr. Ross in his 150th, and the Women's Exchange in their 100th year. So that was a great experience as well. And then yesterday, I attended the groundbreaking for expansion of the Moore County Airport. The airport is very important to the economy of the area, obviously from a tourist point of view as well, and they're expanding the hangar space out there for private aircraft that wish to be located there and where space is needed. Moore County is, obviously, the county is assisting in that effort. With respect to my direct reports and community, parts of the community I work with, First Health and Partners in Progress had a medical innovation summit last week. This brought medical technology people from other parts of North Carolina, but also out of state here, to understand the work that's going on at First Health, which is leading the way in many disciplines, as you all know. And it was an introduction to them of the Pinehurst area and potential connections to new product development at First Health. I also had some discussions, as other council members did, with the resort and USJ regarding the USJ site. Groundbreaking officially for that USJ site on the golf campus will be June the 6th. Not a lot of construction will happen in June, but after that time, we expect the construction of the golf house Pinehurst to be underway during later in the summer. We also had a meeting of the NAC last week, and we'll be talking about some of our opportunities with the Neighborhood Advisory Council in our work session today. And I would just remind you, this is Memorial Day coming up. The Sandhills Motoring Festival will be this weekend. Much of that festival is out of the village in the sense of they're doing things with cars, but on Sunday next, this weekend, will be the, I think it must be the sixth annual now, presentation of awards to classic cars and sports cars. Over 150 or so, I believe, will be in the village on Sunday morning this coming weekend, and it should be quite a scene. I encourage you to attend that. I think it's quite an experience for those of us here to have that opportunity. Those being my reports, we'll start over at my right with Jeff Morgan.
I've got nothing to report. Thank you.
Jane Hoagman?
Thank you, John. Last week, I attended a meeting of a group that works to make sure that Fort Bragg is able to keep a buffer area around its perimeter free of too much development because it's got to do a lot of training. And I'm not going to try to give the name of the group because it's an acronym that I can't pronounce. But Jeff Sanborn was voted in as chairman of the group, and RULAC?
RULAC. It's not spelled the way it's pronounced.
Right. Okay. And there was a very interesting presentation given on the most sensitive areas with respect to development around the perimeter of the fort. Then this morning, I, along with Lydia Bosch and Mr. Strickland and Jeff Sanborn, all attended the Moore County Growth Forum, which was very interesting, and described permitting for septic systems and, you know, water hookups and so forth, and building permits, and the stress that's being put on that process and the much greater-than-usual length of time it's taking to get those things done due to supply chain issues. And so that means that somebody who gets a building permit still has an awful long way to go to be able to build a house, and in the process is paying more and has more carrying costs for mortgages and that kind of thing in the meantime. And then there was a discussion about the housing market. Ordinarily, apparently, they want to have something like six months' supply of housing stock on hand so that there's a good balance between buyers' and sellers' interests. But at the moment, in Moore County, there's only 154 houses available for sale. So all of that affects costs and so forth. The county has limited new major subdivisions to areas where there is county water available as opposed to just wells. But we heard a comment at another group meeting, they went to a Tri-Cities meeting, that the Moore County water system was not designed for the density of housing that's being sought. So, you know, will there be adequate water pressure for all those new homes if that all gets built out? And the Moore County Growth Forum is going to be a series of meetings. So this was just the first one, but it's fascinating to hear all that's going on with that. At our Tri-Cities meeting, which is Aberdeen, Southern Pines, and Pinehurst, under the aegis of the Tarpo, which is the Triangle Area Rural Planning Office, talked about bicycle and pedestrian, hookups between all three cities so that you could go back and forth smoothly. But they also talked a little bit about some of this construction and growth. That was also a topic of conversation. Anyway, it was very interesting to hear all those three things. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jane. Pat?
Yes, just two items. One, I attended that meeting along with Jane this morning, and it was fascinating regarding how the three communities, Aberdeen, Southern Pines, and us, are trying to find a way to have some connectivity through bike paths and greenways and all. But there's a way to go to produce that, but there is some thoughtful ideas laid out there, and I'm sure there'll be much more discussion about that and something that we'll probably be taking up at the council sometime in the, I don't know, coming year. Second item, just an announcement, a small announcement, nothing as large as our Sandhills Motoring Festival, but this weekend, there's a group called Polo Cross in the Pines. For those of you who play that sport, I don't, but they are having, and they hold this at the Harness Track, and it's a sport where people are on ponies and ride around and play sort of polo cross. I guess it's a mixture of lacrosse and polo. Having not played it, I'm jumping to that conclusion. But anyway, I just wanted to let folks know, it's at the Pinehurst Harness Track, and we should, you know, partake in it if we can. It's another good example of the use of the Harness Track for a variety of sports for our residents who live here in the area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Lydia?
Thank you, John. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the meeting of the Board of Directors for the Convention Visitors Bureau. One of their big topics was a recent report by Governor Cooper. I'm just going to read some of the key points. Cooper has announced that North Carolina tourism industry saw a major recovery in 2021. The governor stated, "We know visitor spending helps fuel our economy in all 100 counties by sustaining local businesses, supporting thousands of jobs, and bringing in tax revenue." Visitors to North Carolina generated a staggering $3.9 billion in federal, state, and local taxes in 2021. Sales tax receipts from visitor spending rose 34% to nearly $1.2 billion, and local tax receipts grew 26% to $1.1 million. All of these are found on the website nccommerce.com, and it all came from the governor. Another thing, I don't want to have Kelly put this up, this is pretty cool. WRL has placed another webcam over at the resort, and it's live. Kelly, do you have that? This is live. They used, they have a webcam at Longleaf. They now have this one. So if you're walking around out there, look at the, is that the Paget Learning Center, that building?
On top, yeah.
Okay. So it's on there. So if you're out there, you're on the camera. And that is just at homeofgolf.com. And then last, John mentioned Memorial Day this weekend. The Military Officers Association of America are having their annual Memorial Day service Monday at 3:00 at Village Chapel, and all are invited to attend. Thank you, John.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda. As I do that, I will ask if there's any part of that consent agenda, any items that council member may wish to discuss in other detail or have taken out for further review another time. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this consent agenda? Item number four, please.
I move to approve all items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item number five. Mr. Sanborn, would you like to introduce that?
All right. Thank you, John. I'm going to speak, I guess, about items five and six together here. We have a couple of reappointments recommended for our HPC. The first is a recommendation to reappoint Eric Von Salson as the chairperson of the HPC. And I need to make sure that you're aware, I think you already are, and the public are aware, that this is a little bit of a deviation from the stated policy as written, but we think it's in accordance with the intent of the policy. The policy as written specifies that a chairperson cannot be nominated for a second term. Having said that, it would be very awkward to ask Eric to serve out the remainder of his second term on the HPC as a normal HPC member. And I'm quite certain that we have made this deviation at least once and maybe twice in the past as well. So our recommendation is that you do appoint Eric to a partial second term to serve out the remainder of his second full term on the HPC. And then the second one is a recommendation to reappoint David Herring to a second term on the HPC.
Right. Right. Thank you for that explanation, Jeff. Any questions from council members with respect to either of these two nominations? And I don't see anyone from the HPC here, so if they were, they could also support this, I'm sure. Any questions from council, then, on these two reappointments?
I just have one question. I want to be sure that they know that their work as a member of this advisory committee, like all other members of advisory committee, subject them to the Public Records Act. Subjects them to the Public Records Act, because I think some of our advisory committee members aren't aware of that.
They do.
And I know we've been making an effort to make more and more of them aware of it. I just think it's important, I've seen them both in action, and I think it, credit to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, remember to keep close to the microphone. Thank you. Seeing any, not seeing any other questions, is there a motion number five with respect to Mr. Von Salson first?
I move to approve Resolution 22-11, reappointing Eric Von Salson as chair to the Historic Preservation Commission for an additional term effective June 1, 2022, and expiring on December 31st, 2023.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And is there a motion for the reappointment of David Herring, number six?
I move to approve Resolution 22-12, reappointing David Herring to the Historic Preservation Commission for a two-year term effective June 1, 2022, and expiring on May 31st, 2024.
That's a motion by Patrick Pazella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much for those reappointments. Both gentlemen have done a wonderful job with the Historic Commission over the last few years. Glad to have them still in service. We'll move on then to item number seven. Jeff, you want to start that for us, please?
Thank you, John. As we've continued to grapple with what to do with regard to potential approaches to regulating short-term rentals in the village of Pinehurst, we recently reached out to our local delegation, Tom McGinnis and Jamie Bowles, about a local bill that might clarify our existing authorities. They were receptive to that type of an approach, but asked us to work with some of the representatives of the short-term rental owner community in the area, in the, with the desire that we might be able to strike an agreement or a deal that everybody was happy with. We have a bill, a local bill recommendation here for you to consider, which, although we didn't, did not ultimately reach that agreement, represents the, you know, the kind of the culmination of that agreement in trying to strike what we thought was a fair bargain or a fair deal with those representatives. In some, it's really, in some cases, it's very helpful because it clarifies, it would have served, it will serve if it's enacted by the General Assembly, to clarify their intent with regard to our local authority to regulate short-term rentals. Having said that, nearly all of the language is already supported by the general statutes. So again, it's more about clarification of intent than anything else. Having said all of that, on balance, the deal that we had on the table for our local representatives to consider, I think it's pretty fair to say, was a net reduction in the local authority that we believe we currently have, and still they, we're not willing to proceed with the negotiations any further. And so this is, this was our last best effort. Staff's recommendation is that you do seriously consider adopting this and sending it to our local delegation. I think we know that, you know, they've given us the indication that they would most likely not support it unless they had agreement from all parties. Still, I think this represents our best effort to try to tend to the interests of our community in a fair and balanced way, and I think staff thinks that the best approach would be to adopt this or something very similar to it and send it to our local delegation. And if they choose to work with us on it, that's great. If they don't, we at least have made the effort.
Jeff, thank you for that. Not really too much to elaborate on what Jeff said, but again, what we're trying to accomplish here in working with our state delegation is to put in their hands a document which we feel is very fair, based upon all the discussion we've heard over the past few months with respect to short-term rentals. And they, the state delegation, Mr. Bowles, Mr. McGinnis, asked us to work with some members of the STI, SDR community, owner community, as Jeff said. We did that, and this is our best effort, I think a fair effort, to bridge that gap. And whether or not it can go forward or not is, we won't know until we put something in the hands of Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Bowles. This is a local bill. It's a special type of legislation in North Carolina, which they can support or not. And if they support it, it has a high likelihood of being passed by the General Assembly because it only affects Pinehurst. It's not a statewide regulation. So in working with Jeff and having been part of some of the discussions along with other council, I'd like to hear what council members feel about this. I do encourage that we file this or something with some minor changes we may agree to right here tonight, but I think it's wise to put this in the hands of our state delegation directly so that they will know the effort that we've been making. Now, having said that, I'll take questions and comments for the council among ourselves here on this issue. Jane?
Thank you. Jeff, thank you, thank you for doing this, because I can see that this was carefully thought out and put together. The more times I read it, the better it looks. And my only question about it is in Section A, notwithstanding 160D 1207, a city may take any of the actions. Is that enough to settle out the registration issue as well as the permitting issue? Or do we need, do you think we need to say something specific about registration? This may be fine.
Yeah, no, I think that...
...the thing I would ask about.
Our belief was that the court settled the registration question, but that we thought we could accomplish what we needed to do through permitting. And so I think the answer to your question is no, this doesn't, this would not carve out an opportunity for us to require registrations, but we don't think we need it if we have permitting.
I think that, I think that we should send this in to our state representatives, because it does represent a middle ground of reasonable regulation. But even if they adopt it for us or enact it, that could take quite a long time. So I think we should as well consider a Plan B, but I do like this.
Jane, on that last point, and just for clarity of the public, this council understands this, in our work session tonight, we will be working on our own ordinance recommendation so that if the local bill does not go through, as Jane just said, we have a backstop and we have a plan, and we're working ahead on that. So we'll be talking about that in the work session tonight as well. Jeff, on this same line A that Jane was referring to, it says, actions described in 160D 707B, B through G. Should that be H, which is the last entry on this first page? Or does that not, is that not included in 160D, the definition there?
Yeah, I think that the way we, the way we drafted this language, we were looking at A through G as being approaches that we could take.
Right.
And H is merely a definition.
Okay. Fine. That explains that. Other questions, comments from council on this?
Lydia, please. Yeah, I, all right. You've indicated, Jeff, I'm going to try to state what I think you said, that Senator McGinnis and Representative Bowles have indicated they don't support this language. Is that?
I don't, I don't believe we've heard anything back from then on this language.
Has this been submitted to them? If it was, I missed that link somewhere.
No, I think what we're trying to figure out is whether or not you want to submit it to them.
Okay.
Right. Right.
And also, it's my understanding, it's been my understanding for a long time that local bills will be supported if there's no controversy on the ground. I consider us on the ground. Based on what I'm hearing, there's still some significant controversy. Based on the significant controversy, I can't support the language in here, but if you'd like to give it to Senator McGinnis and Representative Bowles and get their take on it, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't want it to be turned over to them with the representation that I approved the language.
Patrick? And Lydia, thanks for clarifying and asking those questions. Patrick?
Thank you. A few things. One, Jeff, you made a reference that there is some net reduction to our authority in this bill. Can you take us to that point where there's a net reduction?
Most significantly, the limitation on amortization.
They're putting, they have, in this particular draft language, there's an eight-year limitation.
Right. Now, the general statutes are silent on what is an appropriate...
Right.
...amortization period for dealing with existing nonconformities. The courts have ruled in several cases over the years that, I mean, they have to, there has to be some economic basis for figuring out what the appropriate amortization period is. In other words, some basis for demonstrating that we've thought through the time that would be required for a short-term rental investor to recoup their investment.
Relating to what Lydia said about a local bill has certain requirements... Relating to what Lydia said about a local bill has certain requirements, one of which is, as she stated, that there's, the bill is to be non-controversial, which jumped out at me as also, we've been dealing with this issue for six months. It'd be wonderful if we had a non-controversial bill, but that was something that caught my attention as I was reading the North Carolina General Assembly rules on this. The other requirement is that there would be no public hearing asked for by any member of the General Assembly on this bill. So I gather that is something that when a member is going to sponsor a local bill, they seek out that assurance from their colleagues. And as was referenced earlier, the bill does have to have the approval of all members of the delegation that represent the community. So those are obviously some significant hurdles, not insurmountable, but they are significant. As long as we're going to be, we'll be talking later, of course, on the ordinance that's been drafted to be considered. The only thing I would want to do at the appropriate moment is I would want to offer a motion to reduce that eight-year amortization level. I think that is a long stretch for amortization. One cannot say that what they know for certain is the right number, nor can one say what will pass legal muster. But I think we're giving up, we're giving a free rein for eight years, though, if I read this correctly, we will have the ability to cap the number of short-term rentals in our community. Is that correct? That might make a trade-off on the amortization. If we can implement a ceiling, then that's pretty, that's pretty good.
Yeah, this, I mean, this bill language is silent on cap or distance approaches to regulating numbers in certain districts.
So it-
Now, with regard to this question of amortization versus caps, they're really two different-
Definitely.
Approaches that are helpful with two completely different scenarios. You know, amortization is something that you contemplate using when you have determined that you're no longer going to allow a certain use in a given district.
Right.
A cap is something you use when you are going to allow it in certain districts.
But you're going to put a lid on it.
Yeah.
But you can do, in essence, both. You can only allow it in certain districts and put a limit on those certain districts in a cap. And what I'm not clear, as I've read this, is if that bill, as it passed as written, would prevent us from putting a cap through the permitting process?
This would not, it wouldn't prevent it, but it also would not clarify our authority to do it.
And that's one of the objectives of the local bill, is to try to clarify with our representatives and therefore the legislature what powers we have and don't have to make sure we're on the same boat. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, again, I'm trying to work with the document, and if there was, if the community, the village, could set a cap and have some adjustment to the amortization rate there, I'd be very comfortable with it. I do want to probably offer a motion on the amortization rate, though if we got a cap in, I could probably live with eight years.
In a zoning district where the village said there would be no further short-term rentals permitted at all, then there would be a cap of however many pre-existing ones there were. But if there were other districts, such as multifamily or mixed use, whatever, where the village decided to permit short-term rentals to continue new ones, would we be able to put a cap in those districts?
Yes, and so to clarify, the first case you described, the act of, from, you know, this point forward, saying that short-term rentals are no longer authorized to be in certain districts, that by default creates a cap because you're never going to have more than you have now.
Right.
You don't have to, so it's, it's by default, it's de facto, you don't have to put a cap in place, I think that's what you were saying.
Right.
And in the second scenario, although, again, although this local bill language is silent on cap and distance requirements, it's, I think our understanding is there's still legal approaches.
Would we need to have the authorization to register in order to determine how many short-term rentals were, there were, and districts where they were allowed?
Permitting will serve that purpose.
Oh, the permit, okay, all right. Thank you. I also, and Lydia, with respect to your comment on local bills, you know, they look to see that there's concurrence on the ground. The town of Cornelius received a local bill some years ago. It's expired now, but for short-term rentals at a time when they had a controversial situation, contentious situation. And the local bill helped them resolve the problem that they had. So that couldn't have been 100% concurrence on the ground, I wouldn't think.
Jane, to that point, and I think I said in an email to you guys within the past couple of weeks, it's been my understanding that Senator McGinnis and Representative Bowles have indicated several weeks ago, or maybe several months ago, that amortization was just not on the table for them. But that was several weeks ago. I don't know if their views have changed. I also know, it's my understanding, that in the community of the owners and the managers of these vacation rentals, that amortization is a no-go for them. So I think I had said in my email to all of you that if amortization is included in something, it likely would be futile to give it to Tom and Jamie because of the amortization provision. That was an email I wrote two or three weeks ago. Things have changed, but that has been my understanding. Both with respect to our local delegation to the General Assembly and the position of the individuals who met with Jeff and John.
On the issue of amortization, Lydia, and to that important point, yes, that's one of the most controversial sides, pieces of this legislation or any with respect to short-term rentals. In the past, and I mean even in the past few months, I think as we've listened here and preparing the local bill and other information we have, amortization generally has been considered a very short period of time, one year, maybe two years, maybe three at the most. And so in including amortization here, but with a more lengthy timeframe, and in trying to negotiate back and forth the issues of those who support short-term rentals and those who don't, there's give and take, there's negotiation. Now, I don't know whether amortization of eight years is something that Representative Bowles or Senator McGinnis personally will support. We know that it's evidently not attractive, although it was a little surprise, I must say, that eight years was not attractive to the short-term rental owner community. I thought that it would be attractive to them, but it's a document, and that's our best estimate is the way to include it here. Now, we could change that. We could change that tonight. We could try to put other things in that we felt might be, that we would like to see that we think are fair. But kind of this is where we are at the moment, and I do feel that putting this in the hands of McGinnis and Bowles gives an indication as to what we're trying to do, make sure that it is known that we did respond to the idea of the local bill, and we were trying to accomplish that. We may not get all the way, but we want to have it known that we did respond to this and responded in a fair way. So that's another reason to, you know, carry on with this and make it and send it to them. Now, are there any, are there any other changes or particular issues that council wishes to explore on this, on the local bill idea at this point? And Jeff, did I miss anything in the amortization discussion? I think that was where we were.
I, it might also be helpful or necessary to clarify. Amortization wasn't the only thing about this draft that the folks that we were talking about objected to. Most significantly, they refused to agree on anything that included a permitting requirement.
And therefore, it didn't seem that those we were working with were open to the idea of trying to find some compromisable situations here, at least along the lines of what we thought was appropriate and fair. So Councilman Morgan, you haven't spoken yet. I'm happy to have you do that at any time, but not necessarily now, but I'm not going to overlook that. And you can speak now, of course, or I was going to ask Jane or Patrick or Lydia if they had any changes to this document they might want to consider, in which case we could consider that and either accept it or not, and then make a decision in passing this document forward.
My understanding on the passing of this forward is basically you get a cut from the, from Mr. Bowles and Mr. McGinnis looking at it, and then they're responding to it as to what they thought was appropriate and sending it back to us.
There won't be time for that. Their deadline to have this language at least loaded up as a first draft is 31st?
That's the other, that's the other part of this. The local bills for this session have to be filed by the 31st of May, that's next week from today. So, but they don't take long to do. We have a placeholder already in effect there that they know that we're working on this, but they haven't seen this, the two representatives, they've not seen this from us directly. They've had others talking to us. All right. Well, are there other, are there changes to this document that would be requested by any member of the council, and then we can decide a majority vote whether we accept that change or not, and then take a vote as to passing this on? Jane, do you have any changes? Jeff, any changes? Patrick, do you have any changes?
Yes, I do. I have a motion. I'd like to strike the year number eight from the amortization and change that number to three. And that, that's my motion.
We can do that by discussion, which is fine, too. All right. Well, we've had a, we had a suggestion, a motion. Is there a second? I'll work on a motion basis. Is there a second to that motion by Councilman Pazzella to change eight years amortization to three? Is that correct? Three. Seeing no second, the motion does not carry, so the number stays at eight. Are there any other changes that would be requested in this local bill draft? All right. Then I'll call for a vote. Is our understanding that this draft, as is, will be forwarded to Senator McGinnis and Representative Bowles as a statement from the Village of Pinehurst as to our position on the local bill, including the, all the descriptions herein? Is that fair? All right. Take a motion? Yeah. I'll make that a motion to accept this draft. We don't have a date on it, so we'll date it today. That's May 24th, 2022, to pass this local draft, the local draft content to Representative Bowles and Senator McGinnis for their consideration as a local bill for the Village of Pinehurst. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
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 Motion doesn't carry. There's no local bill. We'll move on to item number eight. Mr. Sanborn.
Okay, this is the time of year when we ask you to consider renewing our contract for legal services with Mike Newman and his firm, and I'll let Brooke take it from here. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. As Jeff mentioned, each year we bring to you the legal services contract for your consideration. This continues the agreement with Van Camp, Meacham, and Newman, P L L C, for 2023. There were no changes to the functional terms of this contract. The contract includes a 2% cost increase, which is consistent with previous years. That brings the total monthly payment to $4,945. That totals $59,340 for the year. Mike Newman's hourly rate increased by $10 from the previous year to $385, but I will mention that we rarely utilize those additional hours outside of the contracted amount. This contract may be approved by a motion authorizing the mayor to execute the contract, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council regarding the renewal of our contract with the law firm?
I have some-
Lydia?
Yes, thank you, John. I noticed as we were going through this that on the second page it said, hey, there shall be an annual review of the status of this agreement. And, you know, my question was, have we ever done an annual review? And I believe this is the time to do it. This is really hard for me to say. I cannot approve this extension at this time because in the complaint, in the complaint alleging violations of the open meeting statutes, Mr. Newman's name is mentioned many times. And these are all allegations, they're allegations of his involvement, and the allegation, the belief of the attorney is that there were violations of state law and that Mr. Newman was a part of that. And these are just allegations. Allegations are not fact until a court finds them as fact. So I'm not saying these are true, but as long as there are allegations that the attorney who represents the village violated state law, I can't support extending that contract until those allegations are resolved. And then I also, I had some questions, and I don't know, Jeff, you might know this. I don't know, I don't know whether the attorney for the village should attend our meetings or attend the meetings of planning and zoning and HPC and, which was the other one? P and Z Board of Adjustment, HPC. And is there best practices for that? I don't know. I mean, I know it's your discretion, but is there best practices for when an attorney for the village should attend meetings?
I'm not aware of best practice on it. It's not a question we've asked in the past. Our approach in the, in the past is that, like any others, like all of our members of our senior staff, if there's something on an agenda that needs, that needs his attention or we need his expertise for, then I ask him to attend the meetings.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, it has been mentioned to me, people in the public, that they thought the attorney, the council attorney for the village should attend our meetings, but I don't know. That's why I was wondering if it was best practices. And then, you know, also, again, you guys, this is very hard for me. There is attached to this an essential communications for key suppliers that he signs, and I assume that he assigns this every year. And there's a paragraph in there for ethical standards, and I read that, and I, again, until these allegations are proven to be true or not true, there was some concern about compliance with these ethical standards that are set forth in the document attached to the proposed contract. That's all.
Are there any other questions, Brooke, with respect to this contract?
Do we ever take bids from other law firms, legal services on this? Do we ever take bids from other law firms, legal services on this?
Say again, please, Jeff.
Do we take other bids or considerations from other legal firms on this role? Or is it always just an automatic thing here for Mr. Newman?
Well, I wouldn't say it's automatic. From my perspective, over a period of years, on the council, off the council, it seems to me that the firm, and Mike has been their representative for several years now, does an excellent job. So, no, we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had any discussions about any replacement on that. And the review process is actually something that I believe the village manager is authorized to do in the material that we, that we had.
We do a review process for all of our key supplier contractors. I do Mike's. I don't think that's what the language that Lydia is calling attention to means, though. It says that there will be a review of the status of the contract annually. That's what you're doing right now.
Clarify it, Lydia. Yeah. Mr. Pizzella?
Yeah, a generic question for the village manager. Do our neighboring communities, Aberdeen and Southern Pines specifically, do they have full-time village councils, or do they also contract out for that service?
Good question. It's all contracted? Yeah, I think only the county has a staff, has staff legal support.
So it's sort of customary for communities, municipalities in this area to contract for legal services rather than have a full-time council?
Yeah, I think it's more of a size-of-the-government type thing, too. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion then to approve this contract renewing our relationship with Mr. Newman and the law firm? Item number eight.
I'll move to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute a contract with Van Camp, Meacham, and Newman, P L L C, for legal services for fiscal year 2023.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Pizzella. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. Clerk will record the vote. Now, we'll move into our public hearings, and I will call for a motion to recess the regular meeting and enter a public hearing. Is that so moved?
I move to recess the regular meeting and enter the public hearings.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pizzella. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into our public hearings of the night. We have two.
Okay. Thank you, John. And the first topic is the 2023 budget and strategic operating plan. Most, I think most folks that are watching or here in attendance are aware that I presented the strategic operating plan at your last meeting, and since then, the council has had an opportunity to go through some of the finer points during a budget work session last week. I'm gonna, just to lead into this public hearing, I'm just gonna present some of the facts of the budget here to get the conversation warmed up. So this is what it's about. We do this annually, obviously. This plan is, was developed to achieve the council's vision, mission, goals, and objectives. We specifically, you know, focus on our strategic challenges and opportunities that face our community, and we also, when we're actually writing the narrative of this strategic operating plan, we're trying to meet the requirements of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award program, and have been very successful in that regard in the past. I mentioned the May 16th work session. That went very well last week. The council identified three areas of focus that are built into this five-year plan. The first is managing development to protect village character. The second is supporting the business community, and the third is to provide a safe and effective multimodal transportation system. An overview of the 23 budget, that's $27.1 million. That's 6% above the FY21 amended general fund budget. That's as of the, the update that we provided the council at the end of the last calendar year, December 31st. This budget calls for a property tax rate of 31 cents, which is a reduction of a half penny from the tax rate that's currently in place. It's kind of unusual that this budget includes $0 of appropriated fund balance, and that's really due to the infusion of American Rescue Plan fund, or act funds into this, this budget year. And we expect, based on this budget, to have an ending fund balance of 54.9% of expenditures with the eye towards some of these big capital projects that are in the, in the, you know, year three and four and five of this plan. This budget includes the addition of two new staff personnel. Both of them are police officers. There are five initiative action plans in this plan that impact FY23. You can see in the mall there, relocation of public services, complex, $350,000 earmarked for potential purchase of land to be determined. As I've described, this is kind of a placeholder. If the, if we find the right opportunity, we'll be ready to pull the trigger and, and purchase the land to accommodate that move. If we're not successful in finding this, that land this year, then that, those funds would just roll over to the next year, and we would continue to march down that road. We will continue to work on updating the Pinehurst development ordinance this year. Really, that work has not really started in earnest yet. It shows $0 in the 23 budget because that, that allocation was actually in the 22 budget, and it'll wind, it'll wind up being rolled forward after the beginning of the 23 budget. Same thing with completion of the small area plans for Village Place without Snake Trail. And we'll have those discussions coming, coming up to the village here pretty shortly, but it's likely that we're gonna have some of that continued discussion and refinement of those plans and the, and the implementation of those plans in 23. We have the retrofit of an athletic field with synthetic turf. That's the, the large ball field over at Cannon Park. And we have the continuation of expansion renovation of the given library, Tufts Archives. Now, there is, and this shows $0, but doesn't mean we're not doing anything. And of note, we have $275,000 that was in this year's budget for kind of the short-term improvements to the building. And we got our eyes on some things like better stormwater management, dealing with the, the water infiltration problem in the basement and stuff like that. So that money, the $275,000 that was in this budget that, that will roll forward will, will address those needs. This is a look at, you know, how our budget's carved up from the standpoint of both revenues and expenditures. On the left, you see revenues, and on the right is expenditures. As is always the case, property taxes is the largest individual component of our, of our, of our revenues, a little bit down. Most of those, most of those pie pieces are down a little bit this year, except for other financing sources, and that's because that's the, the American Rescue Plan funds that are, that are depicted there in gray. So as a result, the rest, the rest of the pieces of the pie correspondingly grow a little bit smaller. But this is pretty typical for any year in terms of the distribution. And then likewise, the debt, the depiction of our expenditures, almost every year, salaries and benefits is slightly over a half. This one, this year, you see 51%, 51%. And then other operating expenses that are not salaried and benefits come in at about 30%. And then we've got about 19,000 capital, or 19, no, I'm sorry, 19% in capital this year. This is the other way to look at our, of our budgeted expenditures, and that's by function. And as, as is always the case, public safety is the, is the biggest piece of this pie. It's about a third of the, of our total expenditures, as you can see up here. And then cultural and recreational is the, is the second biggest, and that's a little bigger this year because of the incorporation of the library and archive services. And then the third biggest component is transportation, which is primarily road resurfacing and shoulder repair and, you know, things we do in the right, rights of way of all of our, of our roads, and then also our bike and pedestrian improvement efforts. We had one, Brooke, could you come on up here and elaborate on what feedback we got from Engage Pinehurst? And then after that, we can roll into the public input.
So we posted this item on Engage Pinehurst for a couple of weeks and solicited feedback. Kristin pushed it out on social media several times to solicit input. We only received one comment from a resident on May 20th, and their comment was, agree that employees deserve cost of living increase, if not more than proposed because inflation. Support downtown parking structure. Do not support library expansion. And that's the only comment that we received on that platform.
Having heard the presentation, now we'll enter into a time of questions from the public. This is a hearing for the public. So if anyone wishes to speak, do we have a list on that? I don't see any signups for the public hearing on the budget, but we're happy to take those. Does anybody who's here wish to address the council with respect to the 2023 budget and the operating plan? If so, raise your hand.
Debbie Layler, AD Azalea Road. I have to make a comment about the reliance on the Engage Pinehurst website as a means of soliciting public input. I don't think it's adequate, and I don't think it works. And I don't know what social media the message was blown out on to try to solicit comments from the community about it. But there have been various other planning efforts and other items that have come before this council where the answer is, well, we publicized it on Engage Pinehurst. That's a very passive form of soliciting public input, and I bet nobody in this room ever goes to that website. The village has a large email list of people. You could have put it out through the NAC, then we could have pushed it out to our email lists. There are a variety of different ways to solicit public input. I personally feel Engage Pinehurst is inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the public on this public hearing number Yes, sir. Please step up.
Steve Say, I'm not here to speak on this issue. There may be one other issue might be talked about a little bit, but I guess I'm not engaged on the website, but I'm a big fan of what you're doing with the field. I think the astral turf or the synthetic field, having opportunities like that. I don't have any kids of that age anymore, but we certainly need it. That's a positive. I think all of you know, I'm certainly involved on the parking side or affected by that, and I think you all need to look long and hard, as I've said, as far as what we do there, what we need, and who's involved. Obviously, there's a big stakeholder here that, and I just dealt with an issue this morning, as a matter of fact, someone I'm helping out with parking, because I happen to have a place where they can park. So, you know, to put a parking garage in the village, I think, would be an error, and I think there are ways to solve the issue, and I think it would be not prudent to spend that money there, that there are ways, I think, that we can solve it. So that would be the two pieces of feedback that I would have. And I, for one, am not looking for a refund either. I would like to think that we would, you know, keep our funds in-house. There's a lot of needs here. There's gonna continue to be a lot of needs here, certainly on the transportation side. It's gonna be a whole lot of needs. I don't need an extra $30 in my pocket or whatever it is. Let's, let's prudently spend the money as we look to the future in this resort community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Say. Are there other comments from the public on the 2023 budget? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi there. Elizabeth Fisher, 15 Carolina Vista Drive. If any way in your budget you can plan for a safer crosswalk, I can't remember the name of the street by Village Chapel that crosses Cherokee over towards the Women's Exchange. I know the Village Chapel folks park there on Sundays. A lot of people walk from the village to the Women's Exchange, and if there's a way in your budget to have a sidewalk that connects to there, to have a safer crossing, would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Jeff, this question comes up often, and I know there's some issues there with the DOT road, so we have to be working with them. What is the background on that, though, with the crossover there?
You know, I don't think that we would, we would get any pushback from DOT having a crosswalk there if there was a sidewalk on both sides of the road that the crosswalk would connect. So that's the question we continue to wrestle with.
Thank you. Are there other questions on the budget for 2023? Seeing none, I think we can close this public hearing, but still go into number two, and then we'll recess from that and come back for council discussion.
That's right.
All right. So we'll open then public hearing number two, having to do with the development moratorium extension.
So we'll let Darren go ahead and introduce that topic.
Mr., we'll be talking about the budget ourselves.
Yes, we'll have the hearing, take comments, close the hearing, come back for discussion on those things. Good afternoon, Mr. Burr.
Good afternoon. Can I have that? Okay. Thank you. The public hearing number two is regarding the extension of the moratorium ordinance that we've, that we first instituted in February 2021. This would be a third extension of the moratorium. We're requesting 120 days. At this point, we're not done with the process yet. We've, if you've been paying attention to the planning and zoning board, we just ran the plans through the planning and zoning board. I was planning on having the Village Place scheduled for tonight. Some things happened with my schedule, so it wasn't on tonight's, tonight's meeting, but it will be short, but both plans will be shortly to, to the council within the next month. That would be my, that's my goal, goal at this point. We are already working on some of the, some of the zoning things that we need to do, some of the, some of the updates that we're gonna need to do to the ordinance to implement it. But once we get the, once we get the two plans passed, we think that we can pretty much hit the ground running and get, and get the form-based codes out there so we can have some discussion on that. And I can't open this. Nope, that's not it. Kelly? Oh, never mind. It's over there. So this, no, that's not the exhibit. Kelly, can you find me the exhibits that just show the two areas? I can't see. I don't have my glasses. Where is it at? Can you grab it? I was trying to pull, I'm trying to pull up the exhibits for you. Mostly, you know, this is within the two small area plan areas. It's Village Place and Pinehurst South for 120 days. That's, that's about the time that we think we're gonna need to get the zoning code updated, and we continue to make progress on the plans. We're just, we're just not at the point where we're out talking about the zoning yet because we wanted there to be general consensus on, on the two plans themselves. I think if you watched, again, watched the planning and zoning board meeting, there was a couple changes that, or a couple recommendations that the planning and zoning board did recommend that will be part of our discussion when we run the plans by you. This is Exhibit A. This would be the Pinehurst South area, so you can see Highway 5, bisects kind of the middle of it. You can see the northern boundary along Monticello and the southern, really along Olivia Lane. This is Pinehurst South. Kelly, can you pull up Village Place quick? And there would be the Exhibit Four, Village Place, that the, the moratorium would cover these two areas. There are a number of exclusions for previous development, vested rights, things like that are already included in the ordinance. So what we're requesting is simply to extend this another 120 days, and all the other sections of the, of the original moratorium, moratorium ordinance remain in place.
No changes, just extension of the term?
Right. Okay.
Okay. Other, any other comments, Darren? And we'll take comments from the public. Anyone wish to speak on this issue or ask a question on this public hearing? Seeing none, I think we can move to close the public hearings, reopen the regular meeting, and then the council will discuss both these issues. So is there a motion, please, to close the public hearings, one and two?
I moved it during the public hearings and re-entered the regular meeting.
Second.
That's motion by Lydia Bosch, second by Pat Brazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're back in the regular meeting. We'll take council discussion. We'll start with public hearing number one on the 2023 budget. Pat, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, I had a few comments and some questions. Number one, I want to commend the development of the budget for several items. One is reducing taxes. Not only did we not raise taxes, that we plan to go increase, but some good accounting work demonstrated that we could actually lower our tax rate. We are the lowest taxed municipality in the county of Moore, and we're continuing along those lines. I think this is timely for a couple of reasons. One, we have a healthy surplus. And two, we are on the horizon of an evaluation of the property, real property, that people own and live in Pinehurst. And the anticipation is that those, that evaluation will increase on everyone's property. So rather than getting hit twice with an increased tax rate and increased evaluation, we're sparing our residents of that. Two, I, also on the staff, recommendations were regarding no need for the ladder truck and no need to construct a third fire station at this time. I think we're fiscally sound recommendations and sound management. I do, I think, and this is related a little bit to the small area plan discussion, when it comes to that property here, the public services issue, until we resolve that public services area right down the street here, the Village Place plans, the ideas of what our future will be like in this area regarding any development at all, are really somewhat on hold. It's very difficult to develop land where we have all our trucks and equipment sitting there, and we own it, but we can't do anything with it. So I've spoken before about this, and I know many of my colleagues share the position that we really need to find a way to vacate that land, to settle up that issue with the, with Moore County on those water towers, so that we have a presentable parcel of land that then can be suitable for development by those people who know what they're doing. It's probably the most valuable parcel of land in the historic district right now, and we've got our public services on it. And they've been there on it for years, so it's not something we recently did. It's something that's been inherited over time, a long, long time is my anticipation. So I also, I agree with one of the commenters. I don't see a need for that 3.5 million in our budget for the carriage, that Carriage House Garage issue. I think it's a little far-fetched right now. We can always revisit it down the road, but that is a big dollar number to put in the budget. And I, so I very much support that. There are two things that I've talked about in the past, and this is the time to bring them up again. One has to do with our policy of 30% minimum of money to have in reserve, in essence. The state of North Carolina requires 8%. That's a statute. We have a much higher standard. There's some benefit to that. There's something to be said for our higher standard, but what it ends up doing is we are left with a lot of money, cash, in the end. So I would like us to consider dropping that 30%, not to 8%, nowhere near it, but dropping it to 20% because I think it will help us continue the discipline we already demonstrate, but it will also help us conserve our funds maybe a little more wisely, but we do a very good job at that. So I would very much like to see us address that. And on the turf issue, the synthetic turf, I'm very fond of the concept. I really would like to see, I know we're putting it in the budget does not mean it's going to happen immediately, so I'm looking forward to the discussion on it, as to how long it takes, what is the impact while we're putting turf in regarding the fields that can no longer be used. I didn't realize until just recently, it's not something you do over a weekend. It's much longer than that. I'm being a little facetious. I never thought it could be done over a weekend, but I think that the timeline has ramifications from a management standpoint about our, probably our most used athletic field here in the community. So I look forward to that. And I've mentioned before, I'm very interested in seeing that the Pinehurst Harnish Track no longer becomes something we subsidize by the village, but it's something that at least breaks even for our budget purposes, and that's something we can address in the future. Thank you.
Are there other comments, questions from council members on public hearing number one, which is the 2023 budget?
I have a comment.
Lydia?
Pat, thanks for singing my song that I sing so often. Just because we have something in the budget doesn't mean we're necessarily going to do it. We have to do this to budget, and the beauty of the Village at Pinehurst is we do a five-year plan. And, you know, we thought the economy was crazy the past couple of years with COVID, and now we're seeing runaway inflation. And our staff does, Brooke, the most incredible job of adjusting. And, you know, with COVID, a couple of years ago, we looked at the approved expenditures, and we put some on a back burner until we knew we're okay. So I guess the point, my point is, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we're going to rush out and spend it tomorrow. And staff does a beautiful job of adapting to every economic condition that comes our way. And also to Debbie Lawler's point, this is a song I sang for a while, there's a way to go to our homepage and click on something to sign up for emails. So you don't have to go look for Engage Pinehurst. You click on something and you select which emails you'd like to get on a routine basis. Correct? Okay. Do you recall? But it's on the homepage. My point is, there is an easy way to stay plugged in. You don't have to go looking for Engage Pinehurst. There's an easy way to get plugged in to everything that the village sends out. So if you want information, if you really want information, there's an easy way to get it. That's all.
Comments, questions, suggestions from the council? Jane?
I just want to say I concur with what Lydia said about the budget and the staff's efforts, and wonderful. It's wonderful what they do to make sure that they're very careful with how much money we have and how we're going to spend it. It's unbelievable amount of work and care. Well said, Lydia. Thank you.
Yeah, did you?
In reference to Mr. Brazella's comment about lowering the threshold to 20%, I don't know the exact number that's in there, but I certainly am willing to entertain the idea of lowering the amount that we have there, just because I do think it puts us at risk when we've got a large amount of cash and we're dealing with a lot of inflation coming up at this point in time. So I certainly am willing to have that conversation. I also agree with Debbie Lawler on the idea of being able to market this better, and whether we're putting that throughout through email and saying, go to the website to put on. But I do think it's appropriate for us to be able to market this out to our citizens so they have a chance of weighing on it. It's all good.
Jeff Sandborn, did you have any comment back on? All right. I'm hearing some questions or suggestions from council about actual changes that you may wish to make to this budget. At least, I'm hearing that from Patrick, I think. I know there's some things you want to talk about in the future, but are you also considering any action with respect to the turf on the one hand and the fund balance on the other or the very child?
The fund balance, I do want to, I'd like to see that adjust downward. I'm not locked in on any particular number. We can take baby steps before we take bigger steps, but I just think I'd forgotten to add in what Dr. Morgan mentioned. The value of cash keeps declining as we hold on to it in this inflationary period. So, but, so that's the only thing. As far as this synthetic turf, I just look forward to the discussion so I get an understanding of how this is going to occur and what is the impact on our community as we go through this. That's the only.
Right. And to that point, though, I believe Mark Wagner, just a few days ago, maybe on Friday, did send out some other information, which we all have gotten, so we'll work on that and the timeline for installing the turf and which fields will be involved, Cannon Park or not, and how to manage that process. So I think that'll address, help address that point, too.
And we also heard from him during the work session, I think it was, that the preference would be to do it during the winter, during the softball, baseball offseason. So we're minimizing the impact on our programs.
Okay. All right. Comments are made about the carriage house, both from the public and reacting to it here on the council, and the fund balance, and we're always working on the track, the track. All right. So are there any other, are there any changes, then, that council wishes to entertain to this budget based on the public hearing and the work sessions that we had last week?
Not for me.
All right. I don't think we need a motion on this. I think we're working ahead to respond to these questions, so we'll move to public hearing number two and the moratorium. Are there questions from council with respect to the extension of 120 days to the existing moratorium? Lydia, was your hand up?
It wasn't up, but I do have questions.
You do have a question? Yes, please.
This is, this is.
Lydia, can you make sure you're speaking up? Thank you.
This is a question I had last night. We've had a nine-month extension, a three-month extension, and now we're looking at another six months. And my concern the last time around is, is there?
Three months.
Okay. You're right. Is there developer interest? You know, the disadvantage of a moratorium is you've got developers out there who want to come in, and this ties their hands. Is there, what developer interest do we have in both of the small areas now?
We've had more interest in Piner South, and you can see that by the amount of land that's being marketed down there. So you know that there's several large parcels that are currently being marketed for sale. So those are, until we get through this moratorium and planning process, they're kind of locked, they're in a status quo position. It's less so in Village Place. I don't, we don't get a, we're not getting a lot of developer interest in Village Place other than rehabs, things like that. So there's not, there's not a lot, there's a couple parcels that are out there. You've got the Green Site. They have a vested right to move forward with their development, so they do have that. And there's really, you know, there's not a lot of other large vacant parcels other than the other one that we own along Rattlesnake. So we're not getting a lot of, not getting a lot of inquiries in that, in the Village Place area as much.
Okay. Yeah, the concern is, again, if people want to develop, and we're telling them they can't, they can't go ahead with their plans while we're looking at this, and, you know, I believe last time you asked for a smaller amount, and we insisted on giving you a larger amount because you thought you could get it done. And now, I mean, I'm really getting, I can't say what I'm going to do at the end of this moratorium, but I'm getting to the point where I'm, I think I'm getting to the point of saying no more moratoriums.
That's, I mean, we've, we've been attempting to get the process, the planning process done. As you know, we've had some, we've had some issues being able to move forward with some of the projects, and it's taken, the process has taken longer for some of these various reasons to get us to the finish line. So I certainly understand any concern about enacting another moratorium. If you lift the moratorium, then potentially, you know, potentially, things can move forward without the zoning changes. I can tell you that we're, we're at the end of the process now. We're a lot, we're a lot further along than we were last time, and I think, you know, once we get the plans approved, I think we can hit the ground relatively running with the zoning code updates.
Okay. There was one other question I had, and I don't, and the new one, it said, we talk about, it can be demonstratively shown to the village council that the health, safety and welfare of the public requires the moratorium. Not that it need be demonstrively shown to me now, but this is your first whereas. This, yeah, this is, no, 22, yeah, this is it. It can be demonstratively shown to the village council that the health, safety and welfare of the public requires the moratorium. In all of these, we've said, health, safety and welfare supports extending this moratorium. And as long as we can articulate, we might need to articulate that at some point. I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, those are your, and those are kind of the standard police-powered language that we, you know, police power, that's the, that's the, that's the language under the zoning grant of power. So I think it's falling through on that. The issue right now is we've got a PDO that currently, the harm would be to the comprehensive plan's vision moving forward if we don't make the changes with respect to the PDO and making sure that we get the appropriate type of development that we want in those areas. So that's, I would argue that. Again, I wish I was further along on this. I'm hoping now that we're staffed up that we can get, that we can move forward expeditiously with this, expediently, expediently.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Expeditiously.
Expeditiously. Quick. Quickly.
All right. Other questions from council? Jane?
Yeah. My question's on the, on the actual timing. Did you, that you think it's going to, is 120 days enough to get the plans approved plus do the PDO update that goes along with them? Plus do form-based codes?
I'm hoping. I keep, I'm hoping. I'd rather keep, I'd rather keep the moratorium extensions in shorter periods so we have to come back and have to keep my eye on what's going on with it. I think it will be, we'll probably be running tight, but I'd rather come back and request the extension again to keep them shorter. Otherwise, you could do six months, but I just, I'm more comfortable with 120 days because it gives us more incentive to move quicker.
Well, they've been to the, the plans have been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board at this point.
Correct. You're going to see them soon.
And does there need to be a public hearing on that? Okay.
No, we will need to do public hearings when we do the, when we do the PDO updates. We will have to do public hearings on that, but not for the, not for the plans.
Because, and those will also have to go back to the Planning and Zoning Board for PDO?
Yes.
For public hearings on the PDO updates.
That is correct.
Are the form-based codes going to happen at the same time as the PDO updates?
No, we're going to do them ahead of it. Well, we're going to do, we'll do them probably at the, probably at the same time because we might have to do some, some base district changes from an R10 to a VMU. So we're going to try and get as many, all that done as possible together. So we're going to do the PDO updates, and then with the form-based code, it's going to be an overlay. So there'll be an overlay adopted onto these two areas.
So four months is the first of October. Does that? It doesn't sound like it's going to be really realistic.
I don't have a crystal ball. I want, my goal is to, is to move fast and get them done. I just can't, I can't guarantee, I can't tell you what the time for.
Penance of all those hearings.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there might be, I might have to come back to you again at some point. But again, I like to do them at a shorter period than have a, than have a long one because we can have this dialogue, and you can find out exactly where we are in the process right now. The process is, we're almost done with the, with the two plans. Once we get the consensus from council of what those plans look like, then we can, then we can start working on the form-based code. Not that we haven't started working on already, but it's, it's not ready to go out until we get some consensus on what some of those sticky land use issues were.
So the form-based codes, you're already working on?
We've been working on them.
Yeah. That's been part of the process, been doing behind the scenes because we haven't had any discussion with the council for some, several meetings now.
Correct. We've been working on the form-based code, and we've been working on the code updates that we have to do to implement. So we're working on all those together.
Okay.
So we're not just, we're not just picking up and starting over, no.
Oh, no. That's the point. There is, there's things that are being done that, when it comes to council, will be farther along than we might imagine at this point.
Correct.
And you're putting the pressure on yourselves with 120 days to respond to that, among all the other things we ask you to do.
It'd be, it'd be easy for me to say, give me another six months or a year, but I just, you know, I think it's fair, I think it's fair if we come up in these smaller little increments because it's. I think it's fair if we come up in these smaller little increments because it's fair to the public that we can, we can always, we can always end these things earlier. But I, I still like the 120 days. Let me, let that be my goal.
Okay. Jeff Morgan, did you have a question on that? Pat?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, if, if any member of the council wants to extend the moratorium more than the request, I will second it. I'm not going to do it on my own. But we've been down this road, and it's important that we get this right. Often said there are no mulligans in development issues for the village of Pinehurst. And they've had quite a few shots they've hit out of bounds over the years. So we've got to try to make this correct. The, uh, two questions. One, one of the requests we made as a council several months ago was that the consultant come here before us and talk to us about their work product. And I'm assuming that will be sometime in these four months, this three-month window, four-month.
We can get, we can get them. We were, we had thought that we needed, there, there was a couple of those sticky land use issues that I think we resolved. And we weren't sure whether, whether it should be a video, a Zoom type call, or bring them in, in person.
I'd like to see. So, okay, thank you. And lastly, I have noticed there is a small building being constructed on Rattlesnake. Nice-looking brick building. Is that in lieu of the moratorium?
No, that was, that was one of the, that was, there's, there's several exemptions in there. And that's, that's considered a building alteration. So under a building alteration.
Oh, that's the alteration. That was the old.
It's more of it, but it.
Car wash, sort of, right?
It's an office, yes.
Yeah.
It's a small office building, I think. Is it not?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is going through my head. You know, we, we gave one extension, got to the end of it. We need more time. We did the other extension. We need more time. Is, is, does it make sense if you're getting in trouble during the extension to let us know rather than get to the leap, find out you need more time? Is there any benefit to finding out during that period of time that you're just not going to be able to make it? I, I don't know if there's any benefit to that.
A little update every, every meeting or two, something like that. I would find that useful. Yeah. Just a comment.
And we do try and put some of that stuff in the weekly report as well. So we'll do, we'll put some comments in there. If there's any major changes or something else is happening with, with respect to those two plans.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking, expectations out there is that this is going to get done in 120 days. But if you find out before 120 days to this night, it might be useful for that to be out there and, and make an adjustment at that time. I don't know. Just seems like it would be useful.
I get you.
Maybe we could take that into consideration, Darren, how we could say at our first meeting in June or second meeting in June, get on that. Be all right. Are there other questions from council on this public hearing number two information?
I, I think I'd, I'd prefer to see it be a little longer than four months because I don't think it sounds like we're likely to be done in four months. I'd rather see us have, say, six months, for example, and then be able to say, look, we finished in four and a half months, you know? Yippee.
I, I think Darren explained that just in the sense that it, it puts a little pressure on them to, to make it happen. And I'd prefer it to be four months and then give them his request at this point in time. Yes, it can be renewed. I understand that. And I certainly think an update maybe coming through the manager's report or something like that to kind of let us know what's happening would be appropriate. But I'd prefer to do four months versus six months.
I support the staff recommendation here, too, with updates. Please, rather to keep it at 120. Anybody else from council? Seeing none, is there a motion then to adopt this moratorium extension? That'd be item number 13.
I, I move to approve ordinance 2204 extending the moratorium on real estate development in specific geographic areas of Village Place and Pinehurst South for additional 120-day period from the date of expiration, thus to expire on October 6th, 2022.
That's a motion by Jeff Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Pat Brazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to item number 14, which is a presentation of the quarter's financial statements. Brooke?
Thank you. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial statements for the third quarter of fiscal year 2022 for the period ending March 31st. So as we enter into the final quarter of the fiscal year, the village's financial condition remains strong. Our revenue forecast for the first three quarters is on target. Operating expenditures are running below expected levels, as we'll talk about a little bit more later. And capital outlays are within budget. So this information was used as part of the development for the fiscal year 2023 budget and strategic operating plan process. The village's general fund is showing $5.2 million in income for the first nine months of the year. And this is higher than the $3.9 million seen in income the previous year. Fund balance in the general fund is currently 75% of budgeted expenditures. That is higher than the 66% level seen the previous year. But as you'll recall, we've received most of our revenue for the year, and that will continue to decline in the third, or excuse me, the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. Village's total cash and investment balances in all the funds across the village increased by $5.8 million compared to previous year. And that's primarily due to the receipt of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, our first half of that distribution. Another reason for this variance is due to capital and operating expenditures that are lower than expected at this point in the year. Some highlights for revenues and expenditures, revenue, general fund revenues were 222,000 or 1.2% above the year-to-date budget projections. And that's because of various offsetting variances across the revenue sources. The largest of those is related to property tax revenues, which were 224,000 or 1.9% above the quarterly revenue estimate. Our real and personal property tax collection rate of 99.91 at this point in the year is similar to last year. Real and personal base grew by 1.6%, which is very in line with our projection. And the motor vehicle tax base grew by 0.6%, which is also very close to our projection as well. Local option sales taxes, our adopted budget forecasted only a 3% increase over the previous year. But so far, the actual collections for the first seven months of this year are running 14% ahead of the previous year. And so as you'll recall, at mid-year, we prepared a, a budget amendment, a mid-year amendment to that revenue source because we have revised our, our revenue projection in that category. And so for total local option sales tax and the related hold harmless reimbursement, which are combined there, the adjustment was $770,000 at mid-year. Several factors contributed to this increase, one of those being the direct federal aid that taxpayers received as well as tax credits, and that placed additional funds in the hands of a lot of people. Consumer spending during the pandemic shifted from non-taxable services to taxable goods. And so we're collecting more sales tax on those purchases. And also recent legislation passed in North Carolina that called for the collection of sales tax on online purchases, which we've discussed. On the operating side, operating expenditures were 2.9 million or 18.9% below the quarterly budget. That is significantly larger than our expected year-end variance of 7%, but there are a few reasons for that. One of those being lapsed salaries and benefits. The largest variance this year has been in our planning department. But other departments have also been affected just with turnover and the time that it takes to bring a new person on board and get, get them recruited. In addition to those items, some operating items have not been expended by departments as originally planned. For example, our Pinehurst Development Ordinance rewrite project, road resurfacing and patching contracts, our Parks and Rec master plan, and the stormwater master plan. Several of these items were encumbered and underway, but just not expended by March 31st. And so that's just a timing difference in some of those areas. So staff does expect several of these projects to be completed by year-end. And whatever is not, we're planning to roll those forward into the next year. On the capital side, approximately 49% of the capital budgeted for the first three quarters has been expended. We have three vehicles that were ordered earlier in the year, and due to manufacturing delays, they've just not been received yet. We've been on the list to receive them for quite a while now. And those include a garbage truck, an inspections truck, and a streets and ground truck. Those are all replacement vehicles. And we, we have checked with the dealers, dealerships recently, and it looks like one may be in by year-end, two will not be. And so we'll, that's to be seen in the next month or so. If they are not received by year-end, though, they would be included in the roll-forward amendment as well. A couple other items are the timing of our walkway construction projects, our stormwater projects, village hall office expansion, Wicker Park lighting project, and the fire station storage building. All of those are underway in some form or fashion, and staff does expect some of those to be completed, but not all of those will be fully complete by year-end. On the building permit side, the village has issued 75 single-family residential building permits this year for the first three quarters of the year compared to 106 the previous year. So up until this point, we were projecting approximately 150 homes to be constructed in fiscal year 22, which may not occur based on the number that we've received so far. In April, we had another 11, which is outside of this quarter, of course, but we had 11 more single-family residential permits issued. Based on our current estimates, we anticipate our fund balance will decrease by 173,000 by the end of fiscal year 22. This is significantly better than our estimated loss of 871,000 when the budget was adopted in June of 2021. As of our mid-year estimate, ending fund balance for the general fund was projected to be 13.1 million or 51% of expenditures. That's, which is above our policy minimum. However, that assumed that several projects would be complete by year-end. But due to the various delays we've mentioned, manufacturing delay, staffing, just various timing delays, several of those will not be likely to be finalized. And so that will result in higher fund balance as of June 30th, 2022. And those projects will all be incorporated, reincorporated into the reappropriation amendment.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are those funds obligated in this year, or are they held in suspense and they roll over to next year?
Right. So they have been, some contracts have been entered into in this fiscal year for some of this work. And so anything that has been encumbered would be obligated, I think is the one, I think those are the words we're using together there, encumbered and obligated.
Encumbered, yeah.
Okay. And so a, as of Ju, July 1st, we will have to process a budget amendment to roll forward the budget into the next fiscal year. And we will also reincumber the purchase orders in the next fiscal year as well to complete those projects.
That's an action we take in, at the turn of the fiscal year.
Yes, exactly. And you'll see it in August because it takes a little bit of time to pull all the projects together. Departments send their requests to me for items that need to be rolled forward, and then we'll present that to you all in, in August. Perfect. So a couple other items that we, we touch on each quarter. The Fair Barn covered 90% of operating expenditures with operating revenues. That's significantly higher than the 13% achieved the same point last year. And that's, of course, because the facility was closed most of last year because of COVID restrictions. And this is in line with our balance scorecard target of 95%. And before discounts were applied, Fair Barn covered about 111% of operating expenditures. Harness Trac covered 51% of its operating expenditures compared to 49 the previous year, so very comparable. These results are currently above the annual balance scorecard target of 45%. However, this percentage will decrease throughout the last quarter of the year because we've received most of our revenues already at this point at the Harness Trac facility. In conclusion, at this point in the year, I am pleased with the village's financial condition and position. Council and village managers should be commended for meeting or exceeding most of the village's financial targets. And it also positions the village well for the upcoming adoption of our five-year strategic operating plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Jane?
Remember the fire truck? Not the ladder truck, just the regular old fire truck. I think it was $625,000. Do we ever get that?
Yes, we did receive that. We did. In March, maybe, I believe it is, something like that. Yes. It is, we have it, and it's over at Station 91.
Oh, it's, it's a, Station number one, 91?
Yes, it is.
Here, not over in the post office. Okay.
Exactly.
All right. Would you like a ride, Jane? Okay.
We can make it, we can arrange that.
We can arrange that. Okay. Other questions from council? Lydia?
Yeah, I have one question, Brooke. In the report I read earlier, and this is straight from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and it was the local tax receipts grew 26% related to tourism. Do we have any, I mean, that's on the Department of Commerce's homepage or somewhere in there. Do we have any idea where, what's the source data? Where does this number come from? Is there a breakdown? Okay, I think CBB was going to try to get some breakdown for these numbers, but I, you know, local tax receipts grew by 22%, 26%.
Our number was 14% though.
For, for local option sales tax, specific, right. And that, those, that information comes from the Department of Revenue. So I'm not sure if, if there are any kind of, if there's a connection at all.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out. You know, we were, CBB board was told this came from the governor, but it's on the Department of Commerce website. So I'll see if I can find out some breakdown of all this.
I'm not sure about that. Looking to it.
Yeah, it sounds, Lydia, like that might be occupancy, but I don't know. That's, C, as you say, your, your work at the CBB will uncover that. Potentially. Any other questions from council on this report? Brooke, thank you very much. Looks like we're going to have a, a number of carryovers, though.
Yes, you are correct. Thank you, sir.
All right. That'll bring us to item number 15. We'll hear from Matt McQuirahan on our update on the strategic operating plan to date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Matt.
Tonight, I am presenting the Q3 Strategic Operating Plan update. So just like with the, with Brooke's presentation before, this is actually from January 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2022. So obviously, we've gone through conversations about the Initiative Action Plan items in particular, and we'll go into that a little bit more detail. But this is only reporting through March 31st, and we know that there have been some items that have moved since then. And also, some of these are recommended for carryover in some capacity going into FY23. So as a reminder, on page two, we talked through, and this is mostly, obviously, for the, for people listening, that we start off with always talking about our mission, our vision, and our values, and then talking through the balance scorecard. And I recommend anybody listening who's, uh, new to the village of Pinehurst to take a couple of minutes and look through that. On page three, the balance scorecard and our nine goals are outlined. Now, for the meat of the presentation, on page four, we talked through the FY22 Initiative Action Plan items. So again, these are the items that were passed within the FY22 Strategic Operating Plan and the updates through March 31st. And we're going to go through a little more detail in a minute on each one. But as a high-level overview, and for the eagle eyes out there, I'll just say that there is one area here that says status as of 9/30/21, but it's through March 31st, 22. The, there are two Initiative Action Plan items that are in progress and on schedule. There is one that is in progress and not on schedule, and two of them begin in the future. Now, for each of our Initiative Action Plan items, we also assign a key performance indicator. And as of right now, as of March 31st, I will say, four of them achieved their projected performance. None of them did not achieve targeted results, and then one begins in the future. Now, because of the, the timing of this presentation, there, again, as I mentioned, there have been conversations about initiative, initiative action plan items going into FY23. And so what I've tried to do is present updates that also take into account where the conversations have been, where the recommendations have been so far in regards to those Initiative Action Plan items and some opportunity for improvement projects, as we'll see. So on page five, for instance, the update to the PDO, I know we talked about that a little bit earlier today as well. The, the IAP was updated during our budgetary meetings in quarter three. And as of right now, the first task, which is focusing on, I believe is the RFQ, RFP process, is scheduled to be in Q4 for FY22. So it's currently marked now as beginning in the future, but you will actually see an update within Q. but you will actually see an update within Q4. And because it's marked in the future, the year-to-date actuals of zero on that metric is also beginning in the future. The small area plan for Village Place and Rattlesnake Trail Corridor and Pinehurst South/Highway 5 Commercial Area, it is currently marked as in progress but not on schedule. And for the comments on here, the deadlines for adoption were pushed during the quarter-three budgetary conversations to May 31, which will be falling into Q4. So those items, again, you'll be seeing in my Q4 update later on this year. However, there wasn't a task within number seven, which currently was not pushed forward. So that one is still technically behind schedule. It's about 75% done, which is why it's in progress but not on schedule. And the number of participants who attended these meetings are viewed information on Engage Pinehurst. The actual was 1,145 members. Now, you may wonder how we met our goal right on 1,145, and that's because we noticed that our goal needed to be increased. So we actually, we were at about 200, 250, and we said, we've been far exceeding that number. So we actually updated our goal throughout the year, so that's why it's adjusted there. The third Initiative Action Plan item is to expand downtown parking facilities. Again, this one is currently marked as a starting in the future because of the conversations that we've had to date during Q3. The IAP is now slated to begin in July 2024, depending on the decisions of council and the FY '23 Strategic Operating Plan. And the FY '22 version of this IAP is now marked, like I said, for future. And we have 364 parking spaces downtown, that was the goal, and we have 364 downtown parking spaces currently. The last two projects are both in progress and on schedule. Develop a comprehensive stormwater master plan, as I mentioned. It's in progress and on track to meet its final deadlines. It does extend a little bit into, that was passed in FY '22, to go into FY '23. As you can tell, it is not a part of the Initiative Action Plan recommendation within the Strategic Operating Plan. That's because it's scheduled to be completed in FY '22.
Are you talking about the stormwater one?
Yes.
What will, what will actually be completed in '22?
So I can pull that up here, one second. So I do apologize. So when I say the Initiative Action Plan item itself will be running through FY '22, it'll then move to an opportunity for improvement going into FY '23. At least, that's the recommendation as of right now. So to your point, Pat, the, right now, the policy review recommendations were underway in Q2, and that ended in December 31. The next item, which will be in Q4, is to develop solutions and preliminary design concepts. That'll be, again, it's currently slated for April 30, '22 of this year, yeah, this fiscal year. The two items that are currently slated, well, I apologize. One more, which will be June 30, so the end of this fiscal year, is to develop cost estimates and analyze funding options. The one item that's scheduled currently for FY '23 is to provide that final report and recommendations.
That going to be in the first quarter of '23, or?
Currently slated for that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last item on the list here is to expand and enhance library services. Again, this is going to be changing. In fact, the language of the Initiative Action Plan is recommended to shift going into FY '23. It's currently in progress and on schedule. There's a note here that says regarding the post office location, "The library board will continue as a LSE for the building and continue as a leaseholder for the roast office." So that was a Q3 update that was provided at that time. And we had a KPI, or Key Performance Indicator, to say, to assume operations of given memorial library and the Tufts Archives, and that was slated for Q3, and we did in Q3. Technically, it was in Q4, I apologize, but I got excited for marking that one down. So the next items on page six. I won't go into these in detail, but I will just quickly go over some highlights. And if you have any questions, please, by all means, let me know. So currently for FY '22, we had 76 total opportunities for improvement and innovations. Again, these projects and evaluations. Six of them are completed as of March 31. Thirty-four were in progress. Twenty-five were slated for the future within FY '22, and four were removed. Seven of them had not been started by the end of this timeline. But also for this report and for your consumption here, we highlight those opportunities for improvement in IAPs that specifically align with our strategic opportunities. And so there were, again, the five Initiative Action Plan items that are highlighted there, but then also 15 opportunities for improvement and innovation. And so, as you can see, for each one, we've highlighted, where applicable, a little bit of an update for you all to go through. So with that, I'm happy to pause here and take any questions that you may have.
Pat, did you have a question?
No, I had them answered already.
Lydia? Jeff? Jane? Proceed. Please.
That concludes my presentation.
I thought about something I should have brought up when we were discussing the budget, and we had the one comment that said, "Don't expand the library." But we're contractually bound to expand the library, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
At the end, when you were going over the statistics there of the 25 of these and 30 of others, that is very helpful in kind of focusing, at least my attention, on where we are and moving ahead on these. So I appreciate your keeping up to date on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for this. All right. That will complete the regular agenda, except for other business. Is there any other business that a council member wishes to bring to the council tonight?
Yes, I have a few items. One, must have been a meeting or two ago, we had a report about the number of people who were watching live streaming of our meeting, and it was 41. And we were told at that time it was a record number. And one, what I'd like to do is, is there a way we can regularize that report? So we know, as a council, after every meeting, how many people actually were watching each meeting. I just think that would be useful for us. We had a comment tonight about engagement website and so forth. And anything we can do to have a better understanding of the community's attention to what we do, I think will be helpful for us as council members.
In response to that, that's kept by whomever's running the audio visual for the evening, Lori in this case, and most times.
Okay.
I think it's something that staff can figure out how to report to us.
Just regularize it. It could even be in the village manager's report. It's just one of those things that...
At the conclusion of the meeting, or the next meeting, or what?
No, just, you know, a flashback.
The next meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe, Jeff, just an idea. The summary of the meeting, which comes out next day or later in the day, something like that, might...
The meeting summary, yeah.
The other ways to do it, yeah, whatever you figure out.
If you can do it that quickly. Otherwise, whatever.
You're good.
Your judgment.
Methodology.
The second part along the lines, is there a way to determine how many people watch these council meetings later on? Lori, if there is, I'd be curious about that, number two, because I've had people say to me, "Hey, I got to watch the council meeting the other night. I did it over the weekend or something."
Right.
And so I'd be curious about, again, the viewership of our little community here, because it's important, as we've often stated, to have as much involvement from our citizens as possible. Since there are only five elected officials for 17,000 residents, we count a lot on our citizens and like to be able to know how many people are engaging one way or the other. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Sorry, any other... Okay, we'll move on then to item 17. That'd be comments from attendees. I have a list with three names. If time allows and council wishes, we'll take other comments from those who didn't sign up. The first person is Philip Sonia, followed by Steve Say. Philip? And just as a reminder to all the speakers, our recommended and requested time is three minutes.
Hi, sir. Hi, sir. Philip Sonia, 29 Bedford Circle, again. You know, a couple individuals throughout this community has asked me, as a public policy guy, to look at the target set here and try to figure out a way forward. After significant consultation with both public policy planners, economists, academics, and representatives of both sides, the recommendation I'm going to provide for the council is results-based management. Result-based management allows voluntary compliance, opens fruitful communication between all parties, leverages third-party oversight, and employs our council. I mean, before we go any further, you know, there's, this has been an interesting foray into public policy for me. But I would ask us all to look around and consider that all sides are neighbors. All sides should be respected. There are some owners that are out of state, but the property managers of those homes certainly are not. They and those they employ are neighbors, and they support a local economy, restaurants, shops, events through multiple mechanisms. I'd also ask us to consider our visitors temporary citizens, that's our visitors, as temporary citizens of this residential resort community, just as they do in Madrid and Lisbon as a public policy measure. Without those temporary citizens, this village fails. Remember, the majority of our visitors are families that visit our village, and they love being able to live like you, even if just for a short time. The mission of our village, according to the website, again, is to promote, enhance, and sustain the quality of life for residents and businesses and visitors. We need to include all three of those. The proposal I've been willing to present has wide support from the STR property managers, although they're actually the only ones that will actually pay a cost. And I think that's important for us to look at. I looked at our property values, number-one source of revenue, and I looked at our overall costs from personnel. Those two things need to be counterbalanced, and you need to realize, academically, you ban short-term property rentals, property values will drop between 11% to 18%. And they'll do that in the first year. I know we might want to scoff at that, but that's what the academic studies say, 16 of them. So we do have a solution that empowers a village of pioneers, provide positive, negative reinforcements without expending time, money, efforts, or assuming risk, protect citizens, neighbors, and visitors through provider communication and tertiary reporting, increases statistical visibility of all STR issues and all the negative and positives, reduces, significantly eliminates the negative externalities, that's the externalities, that's the traffic, parking noises, et cetera, provides a systemic incentive through all of the metrics that actually set the marketplace numbers, and allows a village of Pinehurst to have input to that. I think it would be to our greatest benefit to remove all the negative items through a mechanism that's actually being funded by the short-term property owners and allows you to get all the results that you want without hurting us economically. So I sent a paper to Mr. Samborn that's focused on results-based management. It's really one about fisheries and about how those operate across the world. Why is that important? Because result-based management is a mechanism used across the world where government authority cannot reach, but negative externalities exist. So this is a way that is not just off the top of my head. This is a way this is done across the world. The question we probably have before us is, "How can we significantly reduce the negative externalities, traffic, noise violation, poor behaviors associated with STRs through a cooperative approach while also enabling positive economic development, and most importantly, maintaining or improving the character of our communities?" I believe that in one week, I can provide you an articles of cooperation for your reviews, signed by the majority of the short-term property owners and managers, that include voluntary compliance measures, increase onsite communication, have a 24-hour hotline to it, increase statistic or statistical visibility, provide third-party reporting and enforcement, and do so reduce time and money or costs and time, money, effort, and risk to the village. And I think we really need to look at risk.
Mr. Sonia, you're now at three and a half minutes. Would be delighted to get your material in writing. Please conclude your remarks.
Eighty to 90% of the short-term property owners, and do it at no cost to the village.
Thank you. And Philip, just so you may not have heard my final statement, you have some very interesting information there and some ideas that you express. So if you wish to send that on, we'd be very happy to receive that information. Thank you. Steve Say, followed by Debbie Leiler.
Thank you. So, you know, we are where we are on the short-term rental issue. And really, I think I'm part of the ecosystem that represents all the tourism, all the positive things that have happened here for, yes, 130-odd years. The other side, which I think, I mean, it's clear it's represented, and certainly no offense to Lydia or to Jeff, you know, it's about you three and your Friday group. Certainly, many are here in the audience, you know, and if, and if you don't understand that, you know, a lot of the speakers, Fisher Coats, Leiler, Farrell, et cetera. So last I checked, three out of five equals 60%, which represents a majority of the council. And obviously, we have an existing issue brought up by a former council member regarding open meetings, and certainly something that we will explore going forward. So I would encourage you, you know, this is certainly, I don't see this being resolved other than in a court. Clearly, there's two pretty distinct sides here. Like I say, I'm part of the tourism ecosystem that's worked quite well here for many, many years. And, you know, we certainly aren't going to back down, and we're ready. You know, certainly, I would hope, you know, I saw the rates that Mike Newen will be charging, and I hope your budget is sized accordingly. So we're ready to go, you know, really sorry to say that. But we have two distinct views of what the future of this community is. And, you know, this shadow government that's seemingly being run is not something that I personally will accept. And, you know, we're ready to do anything that I need to do from our end to litigate it as we need to see it. And, you know, your thoughts, you know, the thoughts that, well, condos aren't really residential, and all these evil people that come all year, they're not so evil if they come for 14 days for the U.S. Open. You know, it's just wrong. It's just wrong, and I'm not going to stand for it. And I think, as I said, it's a very large ecosystem, golf courses, restaurants, bars, et cetera, that have thrived here for a long time. And as far as I'm concerned, they're going to continue to thrive for the next 130 years. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Debbie Leiler.
Ramble. Debbie Leiler, 80 Zalea Road. Lydia, first, thank you so much for reminding me of your comments at the NAC meeting about the ability of people to go online to the village website and find this stuff. It assumes people are interested and engaged already to do that. I believe the burden of communication is on the village, not the resident, when it comes to public hearings, plans, when you're trying to get comments back on a budget. And I think that the village really needs to explore other means of reaching out because you want to get the people who are not already engaged. That's the name, engage, presumably new people. Second of all, I'd like to thank Steve Say for mentioning me as a part of, I don't know, underground government. Believe me, if I had a role in the underground government, I wouldn't be standing up here all the time speaking. So, you know, I think there's a little bit of a misconception about what's going on out in the world. But I really wanted to say thank you to the council, the village manager, the planning department, the historic commission, for stopping the resort from putting in a new parking lot on the east side of the entranceway to the country club. They very quietly, maybe they had permission from the planning department, I don't know, removed straw and started bulldozing area, I assume, to move the cars over from the west side of the entranceway to the country club. That construction project was stopped. Thank you. It was completely illegal. Should have gone before the historic commission, should have gone before planning and zoning. I don't know what the resort was doing in that area, but it did not look good. You're nodding, you're shaking. Okay, I don't know what was going on, but they've stopped. They had not done, there was no project proposal submitted for the public to review for anything to happen in that area. So that's one thing. So thank you very much. In terms of short-term rentals and permitting, I don't understand the problem. I assume the village is in the process of compiling an online database, which would list every short-term rental in the village, its owner's name or the property manager's name. It would list the number of bedrooms, and if occupancy is limited to two people per bedroom, you would therefore know the occupancy limit on the house. It would also provide a column to check or make notes on violations, complaints called in, whatever. You talk about the budget, two new staff people being added. You talk about the budget, two new staff people being added. I wish we could add a third person whose sole job it would be to compile this online database and to monitor it and to work with the police department to take information about violations and complaints. You don't have to have a permit. The village should be amassing this online database. It is clueless right now. It doesn't make no sense of the magnitude of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Would it be council desire to hear comments from anyone who has not signed up?
Yes.
Is that agreeable? All right. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who wished to do so? Lady in the back, please.
Laura Summerall, 12 La Costa Lane. I was here last time, so I won't talk too long, but I just am sorry that we had to take threats from the other side. That wasn't too cool. But I want you to understand, when we got up and left the room, me and my 12 friends, we just were regrouping. We're not giving up. We're not walking away. That's your real Pinehurst. That's the people who will be here in January, going to, you know, the different restaurants, having their onion soup on a Monday afternoon. We're not here to play golf, and we don't show up one weekend a month. We are here all the time, shopping and buying gas and all of that. The other thing is, short-term rentals do take business away from our motels and hotels and inns, who do pay taxes and do have bed taxes, et cetera, and they're only at about 66% capacity per their own organization. And when you have a short-term rental, you're not necessarily going to eat in restaurants all the time. So I think that when they talk about the impact to the community, there's plenty of motel and hotel rooms for them to stay in and spend their money. They don't need to be next door to me. So that being said, I look forward to something new that will be local. I'm sorry we didn't go through the, the state, but I understand why, because they're obviously not on our side. Just want you to know, we're paying attention, and only about 12 of us showed up in our group, and I know others are here that are on the same side, but this is the local residents who've been here for years and will be here for years, not just on weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others? Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Fisher, again, 15 Carolina Vista Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I agree 1,000% with this smart young woman here. There are at least nine hotels within a mile or two from the heart of the village. These hotels adhere to fire codes, they create jobs, they have staff that live here year-round, they have invested in our community long-term with bricks and mortar, they pay taxes, they keep our, our community thriving. Yes, tourism is very important to Pinehurst. The short-term rentals, when they talk, it feels like they're the only resource for people to stay when they come here, when that's not the case. It's never been the case. So thank you for keeping the businesses that have committed to being here with bricks and mortar, paying taxes, adhering to the fire codes, and keep our stick-built historic village safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other speakers? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments period, and we will move to close the regular meeting and move to the work session. I believe we have a motion for that, please.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's a motion to close the regular meeting by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Pat Pozella. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We will close the regular meeting. We'll reopen the work session at five minutes to seven o'clock. 6:55, please.